1920, 2021 Meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order and welcome everyone. At this time, I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Flynn Adams for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the invocation, I have Elder Melvin Gilmore, who is here. She's an associate pastor at Smith Chapel Free Will Baptist Church, Associate Minister at Smith Chapel Free Will Baptist Church. She's retired from the Cumberland County School Systems Commissioner Council, and she was a classroom teacher for over forty years. She's married to Lonnie Gilmore, and if any of you all bought any Mercedes, y'all know Mr. Gilmore because he was at the Mercedes place. He'll sell you one any day he's retired, and they are in retirement age. They have three children, two who were teachers themselves, and one who is a high school principal in Kentucky at one of the DOD schools. I'm gonna show you how close and how intertwined the world is. Also, Mr. Chairman, because we would then do the pledge of allegiance, I have Mr. Matthew Stewart. If he just waved his hand at the back, he's gonna come do the pledge of allegiance for us. He's six years old. He goes to Freedom Christian Academy. He likes math, reading, taekwondo, running, and building Legos. His father is CW4 Marlon Stewart, who has been in the United States Army for twenty-four years and flies those helicopter helicopters, thanking for his service. And his wife works for our District Attorney in the District Attorney's Office, and that's Ms. Carrie Anne Stewart, and she's been there twice, on and off, as he's been transferred out. Well, I told you I would make you, in terms of the connection, he is headed to Kentucky as he's gonna be transitioned, and Elder Gilmore's son is the principal at the installation that he will be going to in Kentucky. So that's how small the world it is. We would ask Elder Melvin Gilmore to come up and give us the invocation. We're all standing, and I'll ask Mr. Matthew Stewart to come give us the pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy. We invite you into this room as a welcomed guest, illumine the minds of our Board of Commissioners, supply them with wisdom and understanding as they conduct the business of this county, inspire them to commit their thoughts and decisions to you. Let your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the road for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Thank you, Elder Gilmore.
At this time, first of all, thank you for the invocation.
Thank you for the invitation.
I like that remix. Thank you for the invocation. The young man got out of here so quick, I forgot to thank him for leading us in pledge. At this time, I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Tony Stewart, who's with us via Commissioner Stewart. Hello, Commissioner Stewart. Okay.
Hello, I'm here.
Welcome. Thank you for being with us, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we would like to welcome, I think, Councilwoman Yvonne Kinston is here. Would you, how you doing? Thank you for being here. She come down meeting and get a standing ovation almost.
We expect the same.
At this time, I would like to recognize some individuals for their service. We have Melody Dickerson. Melody Dickerson was recognized for her contributions to the Home Mills Community Emergency Response Team or C E R T and the group's successful efforts in 2019 to expand the volunteer program into the city of Fayetteville in Cumberland County. The expanded and transformed group became the Cape Fear C E R T. Melody established the Cape Fear C E R T Teen Program in 2020. In February, nine teens graduated from the first class. She has logged seven hundred and eighty-seven hours of volunteer time, with the majority spent participating in meal distribution programs that delivered enough food to feed seventy-five thousand people. This is presented, certificate of recognition presented to Melody Dickerson, Cape Fear C E R T, recipient of the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, presented this nineteenth day of April 2021 by Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, in appreciation for your volunteer efforts in our community. Thank you so much for all that you do for Cumberland County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. How are you?
I'm good.
I'm good. And before we get started, Commissioner Tony Stewart says she is so proud of you.
I'm glad.
She's been a part of your organization, the Lady Glanly, for a long time. She's been. Amelia Smith had a guardian ad litem since 2015. COVID-19 brought unexpected challenges that kept many children hidden from their communities. Amelia was the voice for twenty-nine children in the Cumberland County Juvenile Court, a typical guardian ad litem case, low average, about eight children from two to three families. But Amelia has used her time as a retired military veteran to serve three to four times the average number of children. Amelia contacts each child and tracks their educational progress, therapy, participation, and general well-being. She works hard to be the biggest support for these children, encouraging them, and doing everything in her power to give them the best opportunity at future success in education, relationships, and life. But you know what? You're only good as the person you have to write for. Certificate of recognition presented to Amelia Smith, North Carolina Guardian Ad Litem Program, recipient of the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, presented this nineteenth day of April 2021 by Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, in appreciation for your volunteer efforts in our community. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is a lot of work.
It is. I was getting right to make the ultimate faux pas. I just like your hands.
I would've heard you. Ms. Metter Montoya. I hope I said that right. Well, Ms. Montoya started the Vision Resource Center on Wheels program during the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure visually impaired residents who live alone do not go hungry. Metter partnered with Avenue Chapel Seventh Day Adventist Church to provide more than forty food boxes and COVID-19 supplies every month for these residents. Metter also started assistance with low-income housing for members who need a home of their own. She helped complete applications, followed up with apartment managers, and drove members to locations when required. Nearly eighty years young. Is this you? Get out of here. That's good. I mean, God bless you. Nearly eighty years young, Metter works tirelessly to help the Vision Resource Center service clients. Thank you so, so much. Certificate of recognition presented to Metter Ann Montoya, Vision Resource Center recipient of the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, presented this nineteenth day of April 2021 by Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, in appreciation for your volunteer efforts in our community. Thank you so much for what you do. Did I pronounce that wrong? Tell me how close it was.
Nussbaum.
Say it again?
Nussbaum.
Nussbaum. Okay, I'm sorry. Patty Nussbaum has worked full throttle with the Vision Resource Center to bring food and supplies to blind and visually impaired residents. Patty collected boxes and paper bags for delivery and assisted Metter and Montoya with organizing food pantry items to ensure VRC members received the package. Patty drove more than three hundred miles in her personal vehicle delivering food without asking for reimbursement. When the Vision Resource Center held its first-ever virtual fundraiser, Patty went above and beyond and helped raise over twenty-eight thousand dollars. During the pandemic, rallying family and friends to help, we are so thankful for all these volunteers and outstanding work that you are doing in our county. Certificate of recognition presented to Patricia Nussbaum, Vision Resource Center recipient of the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, presented this nineteenth day of April 2021 by Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, in appreciation for your volunteer efforts in our community. Thank you so much for all of this.
I forgot to say that, right?
Yes, sir. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. Mr. Chairman, there are no speakers this evening.
Thank you very much. Move on to approval of the agenda.
Yes, sir. We would respectfully ask for the Board to approve two changes to the agenda this evening. First, we would like to add an economic development closed session under General Statute 143 318 In addition, Mr. Chairman, we would like to ask the Board to remove an item of business, item 5A. That item 5A related to capital planning priorities. Since our planning, since our agenda session last week, staff has been presented with some additional information, and we would like to delay this item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're quite welcome, Madam Manager. Madam Madinger.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda with the deletion of 5A and the addition of the economic development closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans, your vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Commissioner Council.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous.
Item number two, Mr. Chairman, are our presentations. This evening, we have two. First, item 2A is an update from Ms. Sharon Moyer, Partnership for Children of Cumberland County regarding the Family Connects Home Visiting Program. Welcome, Ms. Moyer.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Good to see ya.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me to have some of your time this evening. I am Sharon Moyer. I'm the Community Engagement Administrator at the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County. Also with me this evening is Liz Simpler, one of my teammates, and our President Mary Sonnenberg. They're here to answer any questions that I might not know the answers if you have. You may recognize Liz, though. She was just here earlier this month as part of our SOAR committee. And our SOAR committee that we're part of also initiated the state's first, I'm gonna say that again, the state's first Community Child Abuse Prevention Plan. As you may know, the Partnership for Children is a public-private nonprofit formed in 1993 out of then-Governor Jim Hunt's Smart Start Initiative. This initiative's core vision is to ensure that every child have the support they need to enter kindergarten, healthy and ready to succeed. In 1993, Cumberland County was selected to be one of the pilot programs, and to this day, our organization continues to be a pioneer in early education and family support. Since 1993, our organization has been serving families with young children in a variety of ways through a variety of funding streams. I know that you share our vision. We want Cumberland County to be an economically prosperous community where families are successful and children thrive. To play our part in this vision, we focus on support for families with children, birth to five. Our board's set priorities are able to provide services and support that advances the well-being of children, strengthens the early care and education system in our community, and empowers families. While we provide a variety of family services and support programs, we also provide support for early educators. Through our Professional Development Department, we provide training and support to licensed childcare providers. We offer onsite technical assistance for early childhood programs to enhance the quality of care in their facilities. We are grateful to have worked with many of you over the years, Commissioners and staff. Ms. Cannon and Dr. Council can tell you all about the days when we first started the organization. And as I mentioned earlier, we were one of the pilot programs for the Smart Start Initiative, and we continue to look for opportunities to be a leader in early childhood with programs that match our organization's board's set priorities. I'm proud to stand here today and tell you that our organization has been selected to pilot a universal home visiting program serving families with newborns in Cumberland, Hope, and Robinson counties. This program is made possible by the Preschool Development Grant, Birth Through Five Fund. This is federal funding coming here to Cumberland County. North Carolina was one of twenty states and territories awarded a three-year renewal grant. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services awarded more than forty million dollars to the North Carolina DHHS. Two other organizations were selected to lead this program in five other counties in the western part of North Carolina. This pilot program is in partnership with the North Carolina Partnership for Children and Family Connects International. Family Connects International is a Durham-born program and is the home visiting model that we will be following. So what does that mean for families in Cumberland County, Hope County, and Robinson County? It means that later this year, trained registered nurses will visit families who have requested a home visit. The registered nurses will medically assess the newborns, address postpartum health concerns, respond to immediate needs for support and guidance such as breastfeeding and home safety, link families to community services, and help new parents learn to better connect with their infants. This program provides between one and three home visits, beginning at about three weeks of age, regardless of income or demographic risk. Research demonstrates that this model makes families stronger, enhances the lives of children, and saves money. An ongoing randomized control trial from Family Connects began in 2009. Some of the results have shown that mothers reported significantly more positive parenting behavior, like hugging, comforting, or reading to their infants. They also expressed increased response to and acceptance of their infants. Home environments were improved, meaning homes were safer and had more learning materials to support infant development. Emergency room visits and hospital overnight stays were reduced by fifty percent in a child's first year of life. Mothers were thirty percent less likely to experience postpartum depression or anxiety, and investigations for suspected child abuse or neglect decreased by forty-four percent. I mentioned savings. The research also shows that for every one dollar spent on this program, three dollars is saved in healthcare costs. This is through reduced visits to the ER or emergency visit to primary care providers. We have contracted with 4C, Carolina Collaborative Community Care, as our nursing partner. The decision to bring this program to our community demonstrates our Board and staff's commitment to advancing the well-being of children and empowering families, and to play our part in the Community Child Abuse Prevention Plan. I've emailed you all a link to a CBS News report on the Family Connects program. I hope, when you have six minutes, that you'll watch it. While we are still working out many of the details with the North Carolina Partnership for Children and the Family Connects International program, we know that this program will positively impact families in our community. It will change the lives of children, so we can hopefully one day see our vision of an economically prosperous community where families are successful and children thrive. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Moyer? If not, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 2B is an update from Chairman Charles Evans on the Board's accomplishments.
Good evening. Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, first quarter 2021 accomplishments. It's hard to believe, but we have already completed one quarter of the year, and I want to assure the citizens of Cumberland County that your Board of Commissioners and county staff have been working hard to fulfill our mission of providing quality services while being fiscally responsible. This evening, I want to update our citizens on what your Board and county government have accomplished in the first quarter of 2021. In January, the Board approved hiring a consultant to develop a three-year homelessness strategic plan. A community survey just wrapped up on Friday, April 16th, and additional research is being conducted. We expect to have a proposed plan by June 30th. The county and the state have implemented a watershed restoration project for needed repairs to streams and drainage, ways resulting from hurricanes and subsequent flooding. Approximately eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has been awarded from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for the thirty-seven projects in the plan. In February, the Board approved seven top priorities during a planning session: a performing arts center, access to public water in Graves Creek, countywide public water, homelessness, government communications, economic development, and a county facility asset inventory and audit. From there, we developed objectives and action steps for each priority. That plan is included in tonight's consent agenda. The county has launched two anti-litter campaigns. The Five for Friday Anti-Litter Campaign encourages citizens to pick up five pieces of litter each Friday around their roadways, businesses, and along any walking trails or other public areas. Cumberland Clean, the county's first litter pickup event, was held on Saturday, April 17th. Volunteers picked up litter at several locations in the county outside the city of Fayetteville, which was holding Fayetteville Beautiful at the same time. We launched our own county government TV channel, CCNCTV, in February. And to increase transparency and greater public access to meetings, the Board approved installing cameras in our conference room, and we now broadcast our agenda session meetings on CCNCTV, our website, and YouTube. Renovations started in March on the Emergency Services Center at 700 Executive Place. Our Board, staff, and representatives from the Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association gathered to celebrate the construction kickoff. The Board approved two economic development incentive grant packages, including one to Cargill, which will invest twenty-five million dollars and retain seventy jobs at their facility in Cumberland County. Our Public Health and Emergency Services Departments opened the drive-through vaccination clinics at the Crown Complex in January. They have done an outstanding job in getting vaccines in the arms of our more than forty-one thousand individuals. Governor Roy Cooper and Health and Human Services Secretary Dr. Mandy Korn visited the clinic in March. the clinic in March and praised our vaccination efforts. These numbers do not include those vaccinated at Cape Fear Valley, the VA, on post at Fort Bragg, or through other providers. That's a quick look back at the first quarter. As we move forward, we will be working with management, staff, and our federal consultants to develop a strategy for the funding allocated to Cumberland County as a part of the Federal American Rescue Plan that will provide historic and unprecedented aid to all counties, cities, and towns across the country. I want to thank the board, county management, and our employees for all you do to serve our citizens. Together, we can and will create a stronger Cumberland County. Thank you.
Excellent.
And I think that deserves a round of applause.
Yes, sir. Item number three is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Item num-
Need a vote? Aye. Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please forget.
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Council?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart, please?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item four are our public hearings. We have one uncontested rezoning case, case P-2117.
Good afternoon.
So, the first item that I have for you is an uncontested rezoning case. Let me pull up the presentation here. You can see it's in the Hope Mills area, out off Cumberland, Cumberland Road, just south of Fayetteville. You can see as it's indicated on the star above. So just going through a very quick presentation, let me use the flipper here. So, for those of you that may know, this is Cumberland Road, and then there's, it sits at the corner of Boone Trail. So for those of you that know, Boone Trail's a major cut through for this area of the county, but it's that little sliver of the corner piece that you see there that is owned by Brian V. Barber on behalf of Be All You Can Be Real Estate. Currently, it's a split-zone piece of property. It is CP, planned commercial, and C2P, planned services and retail. The sole reason for the request was to consolidate the zoning into one zoning category so they can further be able to develop it for future commercial activity. So it complied with the plan. Staff has recommended it. When it went to the planning board, it passed with a full vote. So I'll be happy to open up the presentation if you see fit, but that's pretty much the summation of it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? And there's no speakers? So at this time, we close the public hearing.
I'm going to open it.
Open the public hearing before we even close it. I'm sorry. We open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and I move that this public hearing for case P-2117 is-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, remember that because this is a remote meeting, you'll need to recess this public hearing because of the 24-hour-
Yes, sir. That's what I was in the process of doing. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I move that the public hearing for case of P-2117 is recessed to May 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for final action. Any citizens or residents of the county may submit written public comments on this matter to the clerk, to the board by close of business, April 26, 2021, and these shall be provided to the board before its meeting on May 3rd, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Evans, your vote, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. So the next item I have on the agenda, commissioners, is a street renaming. I know it's been a while since we've had any of these, but with the implementation with the NextGen E911 system, that in conjunction with a number of state DOT projects that have been going on around the county, it has generated the need for us to be able to go through this exercise to rename because you've had some streets that have been cut off, you've had some, you know, just some changes in the street network. So the first one that we have on the agenda, so both this one and the one that's coming up following, they're all going to be initiated by the county. These are not citizen-initiated. So this one is heading out on Sand Hill Road. Just to give you a little bit of idea, as I stated before, this is as a result of a DOT project that had occurred that just realigned the part of the road, and then when it was put through the NextGen E911 system, it kicked it back to us, saying that we had to rename the road. So we have a standard protocol that we go through in the department when we go through this type of renaming. Essentially, we follow the same process as if it's going to be a citizen-initiated process. So essentially, what happens is we identify all the owners of the parcels out there. We mail them to the tax records or the owners of the record. We produce, at a minimum, we'll produce about three names that are in our database that have been cleared. We give the opportunity for these citizens to vote on the ones that they think it should be. The highest vote getter essentially is the name that we move forward to the hearing here tonight. So, and so we did this for this particular case and the one that's following after this. So in this particular case, there were 12 property owners that were contacted, and Rainforest Road received the majority of the votes of the comments that we received back. So to give you just an overview of where this is, this is Chickenfoot Road here. Let me see if I can pull my little arrow up, if you can see on the screen. This is Chickenfoot. For those of you that may or may not know where this is, I-95 interchange is just about a mile up the road here. So Sand Hill Road at one point came and cut through here, as you can see here. The DOT is part of one of their realignment projects, came through and then realigned Sand Hill Road to come up here to tee out to Braxton Road here, thus leaving these, this road here, you know, with a need to be renamed. So we went through the process. Rainforest Road came out with the most votes. By county ordinance, we have to post the site, which we did. So I wanted to put this picture up so you can see exactly what we did with the proposed name and the current name and so forth. You can see this is sitting on the corner of Chickenfoot and Sand Hill with the sign out. This is sitting where the split came off of Sand Hill Road. So are there any questions? It's pretty straightforward at this point.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? If not, open the public hearing. Close the pub-
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers. Thank you. With being no speakers, then I close the public. I don't do that yet.
It's a remote meeting, I guess. You've got to do the same thing.
Another recess. Yes, sir.
Say recess, sir?
Yes, sir.
I move that this public hearing for case SN-0475 is recessed to May 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for final action. Any citizens or residents of the county may submit written public comments on this matter to the clerk, to the board by close of business, April 26, 2021, and these shall be provided to the board before its meeting on May 3rd, 2021.
Second. Second. Mr. Chairman, can we put these two together? The attorney says it's okay to put them, both of them together, if that works.
That'd be fine, yes.
You go ahead and hear and add it to that public hearing, yes, sir.
Excuse me?
You can just add the second one to this public hearing. You're just done. Just make your motion that way.
Okay. So the motion have been made, so we re-bank the motion. Okay?
Yes, sir. But you still would have-
Okay. For the street naming cases of SN-0475 and also SN-0477, the motion has been made and restated. I move that this public hearing for those cases is recessed on May 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for final action. Any citizens or residents of the county may submit written public comments on this matter to the clerk of the board by close of business, April 26, 2021, and these shall be provided to the board before its meeting on May 3rd, 2021. Is there a second?
Well, I got a, you can second, but I got a-
A second.
Mr. Chairman, and I don't have, I'll go along with the motion, but how would people need, know if you don't present the second one at least, so that they know what it is they, that they are going to comment on, on May 3rd? He did the first one, but he didn't do the second.
At your disposal, Commissioner.
I mean, how would people know what to send in? I mean, they're watching on TV.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for trying to put some brevity in here, but I think Commissioner Adams is correct. We didn't go to the second one, but they are very similar. I apologize for that.
It may be a different, I mean, you know-
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you both very much. Okay?
But I think the motion can stay alive once you finish it.
Yes. But we made the presentation as well, sir.
Appreciating the sense of brevity, I will try to keep it brief. Thank you very much. So this, this next case is also the result of a DOT project that resulted in some realignment. And again, the NextGen E911 kicked that back out to us and said that we had to rename it. So we did contact, so this is two streets that we're renaming as a part of this process. So we contacted, nine property owners were contacted, and Carville Road was received for the majority of the portion of the road that was along Camden, which you'll see in the map subsequently here in just a second. And then three property owners were contacted, and Bell Avenue was received for the majority votes of the newly realigned Oakland Avenue. So just to give you a little bit of idea of where this is, this is Camden Road. This is heading out towards, if you keep on going down Camden this way, the next major road you'll probably run to is Elk. So if you guys are familiar with that area, that's essentially where this is. So at some point, Camden Road came through this area here that you can see. It split off through here and then came in and then came down and then flowed in this fashion here. Camden Road was realigned, and so you can see the current alignment of Camden Road here, which then left this right here and this street here that needed to be renamed simply for the fact that there's a railroad crossing here. So that, you know, put a geographical sort of obstacle in there that required us to go through this renaming process. So the portion of Camden Road that is looking to be renamed, as I said before, is going to Carville. So you can see that's outlined in blue there. And then this portion of Oakland Avenue that's really small, this is going to Bell or proposed to be Bell. Again, here are the signs that we post. You can see the text and information below. So we did adequately notify the public of what was going on with postings. You can see that this sits at the intersections of Oakland. Oakland and Camden. You can see the second sign that we had there. So we did post signs out there. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer it again.
Okay. Board, is there any questions? Mr. Attorney, we have made the motion. The motion's still standing, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now we take the vote.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Council?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 4D is a public hearing on the 2021 Draft Community Development Annual Action Plan. We have Ms. Dee Taylor, our Community Development Director. Welcome, Ms. Taylor.
Hello, Ms. Taylor.
Hello. Okay. Thank you. Good evening. What you have before you is the draft program year 2021 annual action plan. I've also included a few slides of, that will summarize the annual action plan as far as the funding allocations and how we plan to use those funding allocations. Okay. So the county receives entitlement funding every year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This includes the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds, and the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or home funds. In order for us to fund activities using the CDBG funds, they do have to meet one of the three national objectives, and that is they have to benefit low-to-moder income persons, or eliminate slum and blighted areas, or meet a urgent need such as a presidentially declared disaster or crisis. Now, keep in mind, at least 70% of our CDBG funds that we expend have to benefit low-to-moder income persons. The home funds basically addresses housing-related activities, and we do this through partnerships with public and private entities. In order to maintain our entitlement status, the county is required to submit certain documents to HUD, which include cooperative agreements every three years. These cooperative agreements are with our eight municipalities that you see here. That would allow us to use our CDBG and home funds in those areas and include the unincorporated areas. If a municipality was not within our geographic service area, they would have to apply for these funds through the state level, which is usually more competitive. Another mandate by HUD is that the county also submits other documents, such as our consolidated plan, which is a five-year strategic plan that we develop and that outlines the needs, the goals and objectives to address those needs, and it covers a five-year period. We just recently submitted one last year, which covers the period from July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2025. And then prior to our program year, we prepare our annual action plan, which again describes our funding allocations and how we plan to use the funding allocations. And at the end of the program year, we prepare a consolidated annual performance evaluation report, or CAPR, which basically describes our accomplishments for that year. During the consolidated planning process and a needs assessment, the county identified the following priority needs. We will use, we plan to use our funds to expand affordable housing in our community, address homelessness, expand opportunity and services for persons with special needs, including those with a disability, expand public service, public services, infrastructure, and community facilities, as well as address economic development activities. So for the upcoming program year 2021, we expect to receive $890,600 for CDBG funds, $396,328 of home funds. The county will contribute $314,544 towards administration, planning, and to meet the required match for home funds. And then the city and the county contributes $200,000 for homeless initiative funds, and that is where we actually use the funds to pay for the homeless management information system, as well as the data and evaluation analyst position and other services, homeless So the project goals that we plan to address for the upcoming year is we plan to use CDBG and home funds for homeownership activities, which will include providing assistance for down payment, closing costs, and gap financing for potential home buyers. We plan to work with developers, again, to use home funds for constructing new units, single-family, or multifamily housing. We plan to use CDBG and home funds for housing rehabilitation programs. That's for both owners and renters. We also will include housing rehabilitation assistance for those, again, with special needs, especially those with a physical disability. We want to also include CDBG funds to provide housing counseling, especially for those potential home buyers and those renters. CDBG funds will also be used for clearance and demolition to include slum and blighted We also plan to use CDBG funds to, again, address public services. There will, there is a cap on how much we can use towards public service. We cannot exceed 15% of our total allocation. So we will use that for homeless services and other general human services program. We will also, again, expand infrastructure. That can include water sewer, our sidewalks. As far as community facilities, we can use funds for things like community centers, also transitional housing or emergency shelters. And then we plan to use- centers, also transitional housing or emergency shelters. And then we plan to use approximately 125 for economic development activities that would basically provide assistance to businesses that would in turn create or retain jobs. CDBG funds in the amount of 178, 120, which does not exceed our 20% cap, and home funds, which does not exceed our 10% cap of our allocation, will be used for administrative and planning as well as general funds. The annual action plan was distributed through to all eight town halls, as well as made available at our community development office and online at the community development webpage. It was available for public review and comment from March 22nd, and will end tomorrow, April 20th. After the public hearing tonight, we will bring the final version of the annual action plan before the board on May 3rd for final approval and submission to HUD by the May 15 deadline. And at this time, I will answer any questions that you may have. Yes, sir.
Madam Andy? Yes, ma'am. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So are you asking, you said at the conclusion of this public hearing, so you're saying tomorrow, or do we need to have one between, you know, our May 3rd meeting? Have you asked us to have a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Or are we supposed to have said something by tonight?
I'm asking you to hold a public hearing tonight, but our comment, we usually have to hold a public hearing during the comment period. But our actual comment period will end tomorrow in order for us to include those comments and responses in our final submission.
Okay, it's got to go to us, May 3rd. Okay, I'd ask this also be continued to May 3rd because if they come to her tomorrow, we're not ever going to see him again. I'd recess this until our May 3rd regular meeting.
Okay.
And that also would allow the public to submit written comments to the clerk of the board as to our website. Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, let me ask, let's open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers and no written comments have been received to date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Close the public hearing. Entertain the motion by Commissioner Booth.
I would move that we recess this until our May 3rd 2021 meeting, along with the same language that was done in SN 0475 and SN 0477.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Commissioner Counsel, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
May I confirm the second to that motion, please?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Board. Mr. Chairman, we'll move to item number five, Items of Business. Item 5B is consideration of the amendment of Section 605 holidays of the Cumberland County Personnel Ordinance. Mr. Moorefield.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go to the podium or just address, could everyone?
Let's go to the podium, sir, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, it's February 15th meeting. The board adopted a resolution to add a floating holiday to the current county holiday schedule. That was considered at the agenda session, and the language that was recommended by a majority vote at the agenda session is attached in the attachment, which would be a proposed amendment to the county personnel ordinance, Section 605. It simply adds that additional floating holiday to all eligible employees to be taking during the course of a calendar year, and establishes that the county manager should develop and implement holiday paid administration procedures consistent with applicable federal and state law. And this is an item of business because it was not voted unanimously at the agenda session.
Thank you, Attorney Moorefield. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this item?
I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In politics, sometimes the laws of unintended consequences loom very large. When I brought this forward for consideration, my hope was that we, as a county, would embrace this action with the intent that it was presented, to make our county one of the most inclusive or respectful governments for all of our staff, regardless of their race, sex, religious affiliation, or restrict their choices to celebrate their religious or cultural holidays. I do not fault the committee that brought forth the two options. One represented the diversity, equality, and inclusiveness. The other choice was to simply recommend another paid holiday. The justification was, this is what people were used to. But isn't that the purpose of why we created the Diversity, Equality, and Inclusive Committee? To educate our staff and our community on our religious and cultural differences? To do the things that we are not entrenched in doing, that we are not comfortable with doing, and it's not the way that they have always been? I believe the executive committee missed the mark. By stating that, by starting this in June, instead of the calendar year, we have completely passed the opportunity to let people celebrate Ramadan, or Orthodox Easter, or many of the other holidays that are in the first month. Again, not inclusive, not equal, not diverse. I am saddened that the executive committee missed the opportunity to recommend that our county become the most diverse, equal, and inclusive county in the country. Instead, we are getting ready to approve an addition of a simple paid holiday to all of our staff that will have very little impact on the community and completely dilute the intention of this program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Keith. Are there any more comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Just going to the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
I move that the amendment be approved to make the ordinance consistent with the board's action and payroll policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Counsel. All in favor?
Nay.
I got to go first.
You know your name, Kevin, right?
I know. I'm just trying to help out the clerk.
I think she had you.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth? No.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Since it wasn't a unanimous vote, this will come back to us on May 3rd.
Yes, sir, for a second reading. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Attorney Moorefield.
It does what now?
An ordinance that doesn't require a public hearing has to be unanimous vote or adopted on the first hearing.
Okay.
See, I hear Jimmy's name.
Madam Manager.
Item 5C is consideration of establishing commissioner work group to develop plan for use of ARP funds. Mr. Moorefield.
Chairman Evans asked me to prepare this and present it. And Chairman Evans has requested Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioners Keith and Stewart to serve as a work group to assist with developing a plan for the county's use of the American Rescue Plan program funds, which is estimated approximately $65 million because it is such a big impact. The board's adopted rules of procedure really do not vest the authority in the chairman to establish such a group. So he is asking that this, and requires action be taken by the board for anything. So for this reason, Chairman Evans has requested that the board take action to establish the American Rescue Program work group consisting of the Commissioners, as indicated, Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioners Keith and Stewart, for the purposes of developing a plan to maximize the uses of the American Rescue Plan funding and advising the full board on the plan with the work group to serve as a committee of the board and the capacity of a public body.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions after this? Yes, Commissioner Booth.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's in three wonderful hands, your selection of the committee, and I'd move to approve that.
Is there a second? Commissioner Counsel?
Oh, she did it. Since I was on it, I won't go through it.
All in favor?
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Item 4D is consideration of Third Amendment to the Economic Development Incentives Agreement with Campbell Soup Supply Company, LLC. Mr. Moorefield.
As Board members, the internal auditor brought to my attention a short while ago a little discrepancy between the, what Campbell Soup Supply Company reported, this was its first reporting to get an incentive payment for last year, and the agreement. So she looks over very closely. The number of management jobs out of the total jobs created was to have been 18. It is only 13. Looked at the numbers, it does not affect, by reducing it to 13, it does not affect the eligibility of the effort to continue as an incentive under the statute, because this was done pursuant to the transfer of some land. So it's my recommendation that the, this amendment, which does just reduce the number of management jobs from 18 to 13 at this time, be approved in order to keep this incentive agreement intact.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? If not, do I hear a motion? Can I get a motion?
I move approval of the Third Amendment and authorization for the county manager to sign it.
Second. It's been properly moved. And second, all in favor?
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
Fantastic. Madam, thank you, sir.
And that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Attorney Moorefield. Madam Manager.
That brings us to one nomination this evening, 6A Southeastern Economic Development Commission, one vacancy.
Okay. Are there any nominations? Yes, Commissioner Counsel.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Robert Van Gens, please.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any other nominations?
Reappoint him, I mean.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Nomination of, you know who he is, Robert Van Gens. I'm sorry. No more nominations? Nomination because of said name? Are there any appointments, Mr. Vice Chairman Adams?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to appoint nominee Megan Honecker to the Aging Service Provider category.
Second. Are there, there's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. At this time, we would ask the board to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Manager. At this time, we recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have one item. It is the Use and Occupancy Agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Norcrest system. This item was presented and discussed at your April 8th agenda session, and it's also approved earlier at this meeting under the consent agenda, but needs to be approved as you're convened as the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Are there any questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would authorize the chairman to sign the Use and Occupancy Agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to facilitate the relocation of the Norcrest owned sewer lines located within the North Carolina Department of Transportation right away.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to adjourn the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number nine, a closed session for an economic development matter under General Statute 143, 318, 11A4.
That's my motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good. Second?
There was a motion made by Dr. Counsel and a second by Commissioner Booth. All in favor?
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now in closed session. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now in closed session.
How you doing?
Hey, Mason.
Hey, Mason.
Got a new house, looking pretty cool so far. I'm teaching Luis how to cook some lasagna.
Study, please.
I want all the people who are my age to enjoy their golden years.
I mean, it just makes good sense to try to protect yourself.
I've got great grandchildren out there I haven't seen, and I'm looking forward to that.
I'm asking my seniors and my young people to encourage my seniors and my young people to participate in this process.
What you do to keep yourself healthy helps keep your neighbor, your friends, your relatives helps keep them healthy too.
I'm excited, relieved, and grateful. And taking the shot is what's best for all.
I encourage all of us to say, I'm not through. There are things I still have left to do, and I'm going to fight this head on. I'm going to get vaccinated.
I feel very much that this allows me to be more in control of my life, less fearful. Doesn't mean I won't wear a mask, I will.
If you take it seriously, we can be past the horrors of 2020.
You have a spot, take your shot.
You have a spot, take your shot.
You have a special spot, so please, take your shot.
You have a spot, take your shot.
You could be spreading the coronavirus without realizing you have it, so do your part and stay home. It's important to limit in-person interaction with anyone outside of your immediate household, but phone and video chat are safe ways to connect. It's also important to limit social gatherings. If you need essential items like food and medicine, try using a delivery service. If you must leave your house for essential items, or if you want to take a walk for exercise, make sure to wear a cloth face covering. Stay at least six feet away from other people. Try not to touch frequently touched surfaces like light signals, street signs, or benches. And wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds as often as possible. This advice applies to people of any age, including teens and younger adults. It takes all of us to slow the spread of the coronavirus, so stay home unless absolutely necessary. Visit coronavirus.gov for the latest information.
You've been putting back a few, and a few becomes a few too many. For a moment, you think about calling for a ride. Nah, you live nearby. What's the worst that could happen? You get pulled over, your insurance goes up, you lose your license, you total your You kill someone. Hey, Jimbo, let's go take a ride in my new space truck.
Are you crazy? You can't drive. It's a space truck.
What? Come on.
Hold it right there.
Captain, God, Nick.
Don't you boys realize drinking and driving is a bad idea? Not only can you hurt yourself, but you could seriously injure someone else. I think you need to find a ride home, because it's booze it and lose it.
Jason, let's go see your room.
What do you think? We kept it a little spare, so you can decorate it how you like.
Dinner. Here we go.
Excellent. Suckers. Yeah, I saw you guys out there.
We're in the room. Dinner. Oh. Take it. Yes.
What if we start to think about cancer differently at the beginning? In this special issue of Pediatrics, we invite you to learn more about early life factors that contribute to a person's lifetime cancer risk, about opportunities for preventing cancer from the beginning, as early as the prenatal period, infancy, and throughout childhood. Let's talk about how we can consider cancer causes and prevention now, at the beginning of the lifespan, not only at the middle or the end. This issue will inform and engage pediatricians, policymakers, and families in discussions about cancer prevention.
This is an important message from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Has your home recently experienced flooding after a hurricane or other natural disaster? If you have a weakened immune system, you may be at risk for becoming seriously ill from mold. People with weakened immune systems include those who have had a transplant, are getting chemotherapy for cancer, or are taking medications that weaken the immune system. Don't enter buildings with mold damage if you have a weakened immune system or breathing problem like asthma. If you have a weakened immune system and need to clean mold in an indoor area, wear a properly fitted Niashe-approved N95 mask, or one that provides even more protection. Also, wear gloves and goggles. You may see or smell mold on furniture, carpeting, or other items that have been wet for more than 24 hours. Assume mold is present, even if it's not visible. Completely dry everything, clean up the mold, and repair any damage. Talk with your healthcare provider if you've recently been exposed to mold and have symptoms that aren't getting better with treatment. To learn more, visit cdc.gov/mold.
When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects from over the bed and over your head? Anchored your possessions securely to the wall? It won't be a pain, and you're not doing it in vain. Are your emergency kits packed? What about your family, your friends? Do they know what to do, how to get in touch, and where to meet? Do you know how to drop, cover, and hold on, covering your head and neck? What if you're outside? Or in a car? After the shaking stops, look around, figure out what to do. Stay away from damaged areas. Turn on a radio. Reach out for help. And if you're trapped, do not move about. Stay calm, only shout as a last resort. Once everything and everyone is safe, get prepared. An aftershock could be on its way. So, before the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, get prepared. Make a plan. Practice what you know, because an earthquake can happen anytime, anywhere. You never know.
A man was critically injured following a crash early Friday morning. Officers at the scene said the victim was driving a pickup truck when he lost control of the vehicle. The pickup veered left and went into a ditch.
The correlation.
Let the most go back to the opening session.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
No. Just jab.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Stewart?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, she may be off.
Commissioner Stewart, are you still connected?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
We adjourn.